Thank you, the Americans of America, and to your republic for which you stand, one nation, united, indivisible, the liberty and justice of our home.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we just come to you this evening and we just ask for your guidance, we ask for your wisdom. We ask that you be with us in this meeting, or help guide our decisions and let us make these decisions for the betterment of our community, in Jesus' name we pray.
That's the secretary, which is Tom Cypress, the legal counsel. Do you go ahead and have a roll call, please?
Well, I was going to note that Mr. President, Mr. Speaker before, and Laura and Dave are present on my speakers. Lady Fryburger, not present. Scott Monlen, not present. Shawna Humphrey, not present. And Daniel Walker and Jeff Satter, not present.
All right, do we have a form?
We do not have a form.
We do not have a form.
I will note that I got an email from Shawna today telling me that she will not be present and her husband's out of town, but she's here at home. We got the form now.
Here comes the form. Here's the form. There it is.
Danielle, did she get here late?
Danielle is possibly going to be here late. She's been up to do all day. And I believe Justice Souter texted me, his wife had surgery and he's home with her. I believe Scott Monlen also has a conflict. Carrie Keller Steele called me twice today. She is dealing with a family medical emergency in Indianapolis. The family has called in and want proof that their grandchild, step-grandchild is not expected to make it through the night, and so families are at this stage. So she's wasn't able to attend this or a meeting or something. So she apologizes and she specifically asked for people to bring her family.
Since land use, here we do have a form, so we can decide with me. The minutes?
Yeah, I have the minutes from the August 6 meeting, which were sent out via email. Apparently, I got a delivery report from August 29th. So I think everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes and if you would signify for some. I'll make a motion to approve it then.
The only thing that I would like to change is the statement that September 10th should be the meeting. That there was a conflict at the county commission on the later scheduled meeting. It has already been scheduled, there has to be on the 11th, if my office will arrange for that. But that's what was announced at the meeting, the correct date was September 11th.
Given that the minutes would like the discussion of proceedings at the time, what we'll do is we'll note that these minutes, these--
I'll send it to most members.
All right, we have a second. It's open for discussion. Team, now we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, see no vote. Aye, aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Do you want to sign that particular man you've got there?
Yes.
First, I would like to help, since we've already done a roll call, on behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to the September 11th meeting, 2012, the Washington County Plan Commission. Everyone who appeared before the Plan Commission is entitled to a legal right of due process. Therefore, everyone present, who wants to be given a chance to speak, we will ask that when you are called upon to speak, they will state the name and address for the record. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the business on the old business. Old Business Committee reports, seeing that Jeff Souter is not here, I guess we won't have a subdivision ordinance report, land use report of progress. We did have a meeting and I'm going to hold off on discussion.
When was the meeting? It was before the last meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah. We were supposed to have a land use meeting tonight, after. But since Carrie is not going to be here, we don't have to do that.
21st was the last.
August 21st. Okay. Several issues were discussed at that meeting. You know, it was sent back to the committee to talk about reciprocal setbacks. I don't think there was a clear consensus of which way to really go with that at this point. You know, we spent a lot of time on the issues of the scoring process and changed some different things that we were looking at as far as doing weighted percentages on the scoring process. We thought that it would probably be better to weight another part of it heavier than the lower part, and we're dealing with section densities and that type of stuff instead of on the lower grid. So that's about all that was done. We used some sample farms and plugged them into the equation and saw how they were affected or not affected by that. And after, during that meeting, as it comes to conclusion, we ought to look at weighting different parts of that a little bit different. So that's basically about that. Is there anything else that, Jim, did you want to say on that, weight?
I think we put more weight on it, whether you wanted to order it eight over there. Then have it weigh on the same side.
Yes.
Wasn't that the aim?
Yeah. Max, was there anything else that you remember as far as how we changed on the weighting on that? There was one thing you brought up at the end of the meeting there that we also do as well. I think the weighting was your response, was that?
Well, the current point, why they changed the weighting was you could get enough points to get in front of the board without having to consider, which the points have been changed several times, so it hadn't really been shipped, you know, the first real test on where the weighting was, because they took out the trees and other plagues and they get the numbers shipped to where you can see where, whether consideration had to be given for the surrounding redness or not. Left is a gray circle.
Okay. But I think that's pretty much it, as far as on that. If there's nothing else on that report, I'll move to new business. Want to go ahead and, I want to go ahead and turn this over to Tom Cypress with the request that we had got from David Norton, and I'll have David speak on his part. Tom, you want to speak on first?
Sure. I received an Access to Public Records Act request from Mr. Norton, just prior to my leaving for vacation. And I was out last week. There were several requests made, and under the, there's several issues involved by this. It came to my attention, maybe his request, that the August 21st Subcommittee meeting had five members of this Plan Commission present. Is that accurate to the best of your recollection?
I think so.
Okay. Anytime there is a majority of a public body, a public agency, if the word is used, government body, a public agency present, that constitutes a public meeting for which the open door law applies. Now, moving forward in the future, that's the open door issue. My research into the Access to Public Records Act and open door law discusses what does and what does not qualify as a governing body of a public agency. And one of the things that does not qualify and is not subject to the open door law is where a subcommittee such as the one we have is appointed by someone other than the governing body itself, such as in this case where Carrie formed this, you know, asked for us to suggest names and she could form this entity. The problem is when we have a majority of this board, I think there's an argument that because my virtue, our attendance, common attendance on that for this board, that would be a meeting under the open door law. But otherwise, as constructed, it would not, because she's not the governing body to whom everyone recourse. It's a deliberative body for purposes of making a proposal, evaluating things. I don't think that really presents a problem, or should present a problem as far as political concern, because ultimately, whatever recommendations that subcommittee comes up with will be presented in a public meeting for full discussion by the full board. Many of them, including myself, not as a board member, but as a attorney, are present during those meetings. So that's something to be aware of, and I think that may be the first time we had five people show up at that Subcommittee meeting. So also, there are some records that, it was a rather broad request as far as the Access to Public Records Act is concerned. There was a broad request for any and all, I don't have the exact language, any and all documents prepared by or for, on behalf of our consultant, Carrie Keller Steele, for the Plan Commission. And generally, the Access to Public Records Act requires that a request designating the records that are sought to be produced with reasonable particularity, and just a blanket request generally isn't specific enough. So I did ask that it be more specific, but things that, one thing we do need to produce is any memorandum that's created, kind of summarizing what happened at that August 21st meeting. Obviously, that will need to be produced, but given that it can't be approved because there's no Subcommittee meeting tonight, I don't know. I guess I'll have to wait till a Subcommittee meeting, till that becomes an official record of that body. And then finally, there was a request for a list of all committees, and I had our records keeper, Travis Elliott, bring all the official minutes to see where, you know, if and where we designated exactly who we sit on committees back when we contemplated having multiple committees, I think it was last fall. And there was not any set of minutes that actually said, okay, here's the individuals who are going to be sitting on this committee. Now, with the Access to Public Records Act, you're only required to produce records that exist. And, but I agree that we should go ahead, at any rate, just in the spirit of cooperation, and create a list, even though we're not required to, of all the committees. And so I've had Beth working on that, but because I left the office last, was on vacation last week, I've been pretty inundated with pretty pressing matters nonstop. So hopefully, in the next couple of days, she and I'll sit down and we'll be able to get that to the public and say, now. He asked for an agenda from the August 21st meeting, and as far as I know, there was no agenda, so I don't know if we'll produce there. So at any rate, that's kind of where we stand on that. We can produce a list, we can produce the memorandum of the meeting, there is no agenda. As far as the any and all documents, I don't remember exactly how it's worded. All material created by Carrie Keller Steele, dated on 4, on behalf of either Washington County Plan Commission or the Ag Central Land Use Subcommittee, or presented to members of either the Plan Commission or the Ag Central Subcommittee, the form whatsoever. Lots of those things are not documents prepared by, or like the maps and things, those are just, from what I understand, she just accesses those and that she might say, okay, let's, they're manipulat-- you can manipulate them. And so she might post on there, here's, here's the farms, and here's a 400-foot, here's a 700-foot, but that's not a saved document from what I understand what she's doing. That's just a manipulation she does during the meeting. And those aren't things in her possession or our possession. A contract with us would fall under that, but I don't know if that's why he's after or not. So to the extent that I, if you want to respond--
Yeah. Yes. I think the main thing I wanted to get at was the document that she was presenting on the projector at the last Plan Commission. I knew that was something that, that, you know, from what I understand, the documents things was that documents that you have, except that have to do with personnel or litigation or attorney-client privilege are public record and available, and that Subcommittee would be likewise. But, you know, if she has, you know, if you contracted with her to provide some kind of documents or some kind of work product, and you have that work product, whether it was on a projector, you know, just because you show something on a projector doesn't mean that you don't have to satisfy documentary rights. You know what I mean? And she was showing something on a projector, and from what I understand, you know, if you get a, unless it's attorney-client privilege or a personnel matter or litigation, that, you know, things that are provided to you that you contracted to get are public records. So if you have draft ordinances or something provided to the committee members, those are public records. I mean, things that you gave her, that she's giving back to you, that's okay. If there's maps that are already a public record, that she's just giving back, you know, if it's already a public record, that's not what I'm asking.
You're talking about the draft, like the draft ordinance specifically, for what she's working on.
Well, I don't know. It's hard to be specific, because it hasn't been presented, as far as I know, openly, except at an angle on a projection screen and at this secret meetings of the Ag and Planning Day. But I don't think you can contract with her, and then that she can gather a committee and then write an ordinance, and then a quorum of Plan Commission people can go to this meeting and talk about the ordinance and then come back and say, well, this, well, if you're advising yourself at an executive session, well, I don't think you can have an executive session unless it's to do with litigation or personnel matters. But there's an ordinance that you're asking him, and there's discussing of a document that you're not allowing the public to have.
Yeah, you're--
I mean, this is not a public meeting if you're talking about documents that we don't have. It's a sham of a public meeting. It's a--
Oh, if we're discussing language, okay. So you're saying, we have an open Plan Commission meeting, and we discuss the status of where they are in the draft, that's, okay. Well, a lot of what you said was kind of mixing open door law, bits and pieces of law with Access to Public Records Act pieces of law, and so some--
Well, I saw all of this at the same meeting.
Right.
I got the--
And also, that you have to provide a draft minutes. If you don't have the minutes to the meeting, you're supposed to provide the draft minutes.
Okay.
Whatever form that's in, that might just be, that's why I said notes. I just meant, if you don't have some kind of formal minutes, and you're going to construct minutes in the future, you must be constructing them from Sunday. So even if you don't call it the draft minutes, in effect, that is the draft minutes. So whatever you're planning on making the minutes for that August 21st meeting from, I would say that that is legally the draft minutes.
Okay, well, I'll get that to you within, as soon as I can get--
I understand that my request was very broad, because I was trying to capture everything, and I respected your analysis of it. I don't know if you're representing the committee and not trying to figure out what I'm trying to ask.
Right, and that's what made--
I appreciate your response.
That made that really more difficult than--
I probably, I probably did. I shouldn't have said, I don't the draft ordinance, that might--
Okay. Let me take a look at that, because I think there's some question whether it really does fall under the definition of a public record.
Thank you.
But I've heard you, and I'll take a look at that, and hopefully have a response to you by the end of the week, along with the other items.
Thank you.
However, because I'm creating a list that, or multiple lists that don't really exist and therefore aren't public records, and just creating them for you, I'm going to decline to put email addresses, absence on, unless you guys want me to put, you want home phone numbers, email addresses, you want me to put that on there?
The only thing is, is that with the Plan Commission, remember, we're supposed to be, have the information all as a group, you know? I don't want it, I don't mind the communication, but if there's anything that's pertinent or pending, you know, as far as our decision in there--
Right.
--I ask you this question, that we know it'd be working with individuals.
Right. What President Horace is talking about is, there is an ethical limitation on a body like this, where if there's a specific matter or an application before the Plan Commission or border zoning appeals, the information relative to that individual request that's received by any member should be received by all members, and at the same time. So it's inappropriate for individual members to go out and start having personal discussions outside of a meeting, because they may be gathering information that's not introduced in a public meeting.
Well, I think that's why the documents should be made public, and why the minutes should be made public, and the agenda made public. Otherwise, that's where you get to where I'm hearing rumors of things. That's not the best way to run government, to have secret meetings and then have rumors, which may be wild rumors, they may, things may be mischaracterized.
Rest assured--
But how can anybody avoid, I mean, this is something of interest to the public. I mean, I care how this thing is decided.
Right. And when they're, the purpose of a Subcommittee is so that the entire body doesn't get bogged down with a lot of discussion among a lot of members that may otherwise be unnecessary. If you can appoint a smaller committee to work on something, kind of like the rules and procedures Subcommittee, I don't think you were present when we did that. But a couple of us got together with me at my office, and we sat down, and we kind of came up with some proposed rules. And then we presented, once we came up with a draft proposal, we had a couple of meetings where we went, where we went through those in great painstaking, boring detail, but it was all presented in a public meeting, and of course, it wasn't very exciting, so it didn't draw a lot of comment. But, and that's what's going to happen here, is there will be ample opportunity once there is a proposal to discuss. So right now, ideas are being tossed about, and, but there is no real proposal. And obviously, there's a lot of people in this room who have sat in on the Subcommittee meeting, who, you know, and we talk about that as a body, and certainly last time, the idea was to come to the Plan Commission because there was, they were stuck on a single issue, and they wanted the Plan Commission to give them guidance before they went further, because they got stuck on that one issue. But eventually, in the very near future, I think we probably hope to be at that point already, but in the very near future, we will have a proposed document to go over and find detail and review and discussion by all members, all nine members of the Plan Commission and members of the public, in an open meeting. But as you just heard Max and David say, there was some weighting that had been assigned to different factors, and there was a change in that weighting that had been assigned. And those types of things, you know, what ultimately gets decided to be presented is something that will, I think, cut down on the length of deliberation by the entire Plan Commission, because they can kind of evaluate, let's think about this for a while, and then let's, well, what about this, and kind of change it. And if we had, if we turn everyone into a public meeting and a public discussion with every point, then we've really, what's the word, I'm looking for, we've obviated the point of having a Subcommittee, because as Max just even said, there was, there was a change in the weighting system. Well, if we released every time, every time the Subcommittee changed its mind about a proposal on this item or that item or whatever item, and there was, and, you know, a dissemination into the public, if here's the draft ordinance, we'd have 16 drafts out there in the public, and people would be arguing points that aren't even points anymore, because that was three drafts ago or three issues ago, and that's not even on the table anymore. So I'm just saying, rest assured, that regardless of what I concluded based on that specific request for the draft ordinance, which I'm not convinced, as I sit here without doing for the research of even a public record, that there will be plenty of opportunity, because there are members of this Plan Commission who haven't seen, you know, the entire draft ordinance, and certainly aren't ready to discuss its terms or whatever, because the terms that exist at any given point might not be the terms that are ultimately presented for discussion and adoption. That, I mean, is that, that's pretty much why there is a Subcommittee. So I don't want you to think that there won't be an opportunity for the public to discuss it, because--
Well, we have to, not only, not only does it have to be presented to the entire board by the Subcommittee, once they actually have a draft, that is a final draft, but then before this, before the Plan Commission could possibly even vote on it, we have to hold a public hearing on that particular--
And it'll go before the Commissioners, and also--
Yeah, and the Commissioners have to do the same thing.
And then the public can show up there and discuss, because this is a, this is an advisory body to the county Commissioners. And so, and really, this little Subcommittee is an advisory body, we aren't consulting, at the leadership, at the console, is an advisory body to this, which is an advisory body. So the point of that is for drafts to be, and ideas to be, I think, disseminated with, considered, evaluated, and adopted, disseminated with on a smarter scale for expediency. And then once a doable, proposed, adoptable ordinance is, is ready for consideration, then we will have, I'm sure, at least one meeting where we discuss it, you know, item by item, as an entire Plan Commission, open to the public, and have public input, there'll be a public hearing, and then it'll go before the Plan, I'm sorry, the county Commissioners, before it becomes law, and they will discuss it and take public input. Similar to--
They have to have a hearing to do that.
Yeah, similar to, and I'm going to have to double check on the exact procedure, but there will be at least one public hearing, so. So I don't want you to think that's, this Secret Committee is doing things behind the public's back, and we're going to, you know, all of a sudden, the public's going to be bound by something. I'm just, I'm just saying that the whole idea of this is, let's, let's do something in a more expeditious manner.
Well, that's kind of how the land use plan--
The comprehensive--
--come about. They come at the end, after they had these public hearings, and then they said, well, we have to pass it, because we're going to be on the hook for all of this money. So we found out at the end of all these public hearings, that it was already a done deal, that the-- deal, that the county was on the hook for the money. And while they were having the public hearings, and we thought it was a genuine public hearing and it was already committed, we were committed to it.
We were committed to the money. We had to pay the consultant for the work the consultant did.
Well, you had to pass it, or it was gonna cost the county more money?
No, it wasn't gonna cost the county any more money. We were gonna have to pay the money to the consultant whether we adopted it or not.
Well, I remember something different from the commissioners' meetings.
Well, I remember.
There was some grant money that if they didn't approve it, that they were gonna lose this grant money to us.
Oh, the grant, okay. The commissioner behind you though, I can tell you, I can remember that that, that draft that was produced was not adopted by the commissioners. Two of the commissioners specifically requested that changes be made. But there was a list of changes that they weren't happy with after they reviewed it and it was sent back and another public hearing was held and.
But something had to be adopted or you're gonna lose the grant money.
Well, I think more than likely, given that, given that a Plan Commission was established by the commissioners in the first place, that some type of comprehensive plan, with instructions to develop a comprehensive plan, that some form of a comprehensive plan is gonna be established. To inform the Plan Commission, tell them to come up with a comprehensive plan, apply for grant to pay for it if you didn't want a comprehensive plan. The only issue is, what does that comprehensive plan contain?
We can go on.
You've got my phone number.
Yes.
So you and I'll get together hopefully by the end of the week.
Well, I don't expect you to come up with that list of names on the commissions as I, I believe you that that wasn't all formalized, so. That was just something I wanted to know because I was having a hard time figuring out who just sent a letter to for the subcommittee. That was why, or to know how many people would be in core among the subcommittee or anything like that.
When it was first established, Carrie asked us to set up a subcommittee, a work committee to work with. And at the time, there was a number of people that was discussed that she would want on that committee. I think she started out with eight, wasn't it? She was wanting names, seven submitted, and we asked for her to take it up to ten to try to see who would come to the meeting to participate. And I will tell you that the attendance on that meeting was like an accordion. All the way down to three, up to seven, three to seven. And all of it was like an accordion. You know, we tried to get good representation, you know, as far as all this, to work out the details, you know, in a draft, but that's exactly what it is. It's a draft and there's a lot of discussion line by line and like page by page and there's been discussion and changes. And we've come back in the next meetings and changed and re-discussed different issues. So it is a working document. It's not anything that we feel comfortable as far as presenting to the Plan Commission as of now because it is a draft form. And that's exactly what it is. It's a draft. And it will have public comments and public hearing that'll come up, be discussed by the Plan Commission and it'll be discussed by the commissioners also. So there's gonna be plenty of open, talk, you know, public type of comment period to be made. But, you know, as far as trying to get this thing working in a process, but we present out a working document so that the Plan Commission can review it, we decided to go to a smaller committee with other people involved in it to try to present it. We acknowledged that in the process when we come to the meeting, that there was probably too many Plan Commissioners giving away. Probably the best thing for it done, one of us probably should have stepped out. Thank you.
I never will have to screw that up.
Hours on the day. So probably at the next meeting, we'll probably have two people. But anyway, as far as how the committees were set up, you know, in meetings back then, I pulled out some long notes. I had some long notes that, the suggestions of committees, one was subdivision, one was for land use, one for water resources, and then we also had one for the rules and procedures.
Wasn't there a 911 committee established?
Yeah, there was 911, but I don't even have notes of that. But they were just done in a note form.
The Rules and Procedures Committee, he did.
Yeah.
But the, the land use thing was something Carrie did.
Yeah, Carrie.
That was not by resolution of the Plan Commission.
David, do you have anything else? Okay, anybody else would like to make comment on this? Let's talk about the subcommittee requirements. Can we talk about that or, you know, talk as far as our subcommittee requirements? We'll, we'll be looking at as far as the subcommittee. We have had, you know, I've had discussions with you about memorandums.
Right. Well, and the reason I, the reason I think that needs to be done is because there was a majority of this public body, even though it was a different entity, which is this little subcommittee, by virtue of your presence, not yours personally, but the Plan Commission, five members' presence. I think a minutes or memorandum should be prepared, you know, in my opinion. That probably was a public meeting. I think there could be a counter argument that, you know, it wasn't, we just showed up. I really think in all fairness and transparency, that's, that, that was, that was unintended, but yet a public meeting. And whenever there's a public meeting, a memorandum needs to be prepared, or a memorandum needs to be prepared. So, but that, I don't look for that to happen yet. And this is something I try to remind bodies from time to time, when you're a, a public agency like this, just remember that any time that a majority of you get together, you need to be wary of the open door law. This is a violation. It's happened there. There have been times when, like even in, when the county council has their budget hearings, and a couple of commissioners won't show up at the budget hearings, you know? I've, I've suggested to be on the safe side, even though it's not your meeting, to bear the fact that you're showing up receiving information and having input on an element of, of the business, which may be more realm of control than it contributes to meetings. So we've actually sabotaged, not advertised, but pushed to the notice of the fact that two or more commissioners attend a meeting on another body and are receiving information that may be quite expensive.
David's here right now. Wait, wait, wait.
Right. So, you know, here, here's another example, but, but again, you know, this is, I would be tempted to say difference because you're acting in capacity as an actual Plan Commission and it's a public and it's, you know, the chance gathering. But still, it's, you know, that's something that we're constantly concerned with.
And I don't think the purpose of the open door was the top end of the government people enough that they can't gather information, you know? I think part of it is to have transparency and disclosure.
It does say that you can get, that if you're just gathering information, like you go someplace and receive it and you're not talking to each other, making decisions about how you're gonna, let's move this, let's do this at the next meeting. If you're just receiving information, passive.
So we just.
We definitely didn't make any decisions in that subcommittee.
When you can.
We didn't.
Well, the definition of meeting has within it official action. And official action has a definition that's, has like thirteen different descriptions of things, which includes receiving information as long as it's on a topic. Now, while you're referring, while you're on a topic of which they have control as by virtue of their governmental position, what you're talking to is traveling to and from, I think you alluded to traveling to and from meetings for the purpose of learning how to do your job. In other words, like there's, the state will put on meetings and like if there's a road school, for instance, at Purdue, that's on, several commissioners and council get together, carpool with the road school. That gathering in a car isn't a, a public meeting.
Or being at the school together, it's not considered public. You know, all the people being in the same classroom receiving that information is not considered a violation of public.
I think it depends on the, the nature of the information as.
Right, but if it's like a schooling thing for commissioners.
Right, if it's schooling and how to do your job, yeah.
But if it's, if you may, the county commissioners, you go to something to receive information as the Plan Commission, that would be different.
All right, I think that we've had disclosure as far as, you know, trying to keep away from having a forum of Plan Commission that attend any of these subcommittee meetings, whether it's land use or water resources or subdivision or 911, try to do that. And, you know, if we see that there is more than one attending, I mean, more than four, then we need to step aside. And we will present the memorandum and we'll, at the next subcommittee, we'll review the memorandum and okay it as soon as we can. That satisfies your requirements on that.
Well.
As far as.
That's one of the many.
Well, he also wants to discuss the, the draft.
Yeah.
You know, the, the current.
You know, the reason, we don't want a bunch of misinformation go out there with a draft document, because there's pages we haven't even got to. You know? And if we present out a whole draft document, you know, that we're using pages and door open there, we haven't even reviewed it, then that's not.
Also, that was presented here at a Plan Commission meeting.
Well, we.
That was put on a projector and.
Certain language that had been discussed was put up on a projector.
They were wanting input, the subcommittee was wanting input on where to go with the problem that they're having writing the draft. The draft is not even a thing yet.
We got a lot of good input. At the last meeting from, from public here about, well, things about setbacks and things aren't getting, that goes back to discussion with, at meetings.
But I just think if it's presented at a public meeting for the Plan Commission here, and it's a public document. Now, because I saw it was like, whether it's received electronically, like an email or various, it's a pretty wide way to describe a document. And I think that the public, office of public counsel or the federal regard, showing it on a projector at the public meeting would qualify as that you received it and that it was discussed at a public meeting. As much as if it was, if she had handed it out to you up there, I'm not sure that they would draw a distinction, otherwise everybody could just show stuff on projectors and not have to hand out documents.
There was a specific, there was a specific area that we were working.
Specific language that was presented.
Yes.
But that she put up there. Because, I mean, by the same token, if I had used a projector to discuss the, the open door law or the Access to Public Records Act and I put up various provisions that we discussed, you know, which is a part of Title V, Act 14, Chapter 1.5, would that require then, you know, was the entire Indiana Code a document that we discussed in this meeting?
That's already public record.
Right, it is, but, but, but for illustrative purposes only, it's like at what point, because again, there are things that haven't even been discussed.
But she handed it out on hard copy to each of you and then she just referred to one paragraph.
It was not.
It was.
But if she only talked about one part, that means you don't have to share the document.
But we don't have the document paid yet. I mean, we don't have, if I had a copy of it, I'd give it to you.
But didn't she give them some of money for preparing this document?
It's not been prepared or that.
Yeah, she does and her contract's not out yet. I mean, she's still, we're still working on it.
It, I mean, it's in draft form.
You're just saying if you received it in hard copy, you wouldn't have to share it either.
I'm sorry.
If you have received it in hard copy from her at that public meeting, you wouldn't have to share that as public record?
That, that is if, that had happened, that's what I'm going to research and get back with you on as to what extent, you know, does that point that you raised that, that it was presented, is that to make it a public document?
Because I think if you receive something, you can't just, well, I'm only gonna talk about the part that we talked about at the public meeting and then keep the rest a secret until we talk about it.
To the extent that you're talking about a hypothetical, I guess that's, makes it irrelevant because it's a hypothetical.
Well, it's not hypothetical that she showed from this document to protect.
Yeah, she determined something, but I, but as I said.
It's something you contracted to give.
As I said in my letter.
Just because only part of it was talked about at the meeting. I mean, you can't just say, well, I got it by electronic means, therefore I don't have to share the document.
No, no. Public record, I'm sorry, the, the Indiana Code 514-3-2.1 defines public agency to exclude a paid provider of services to the county. So Carrie Keller Steele and her documents and records do not constitute record subject to.
Absolutely. I could not ask her for all that she had done, but just what she has presented to you.
And what she has presented, that's what our discussion is. You know, that, that little segment, but also records that are intra-agency or inter-agency advisory or deliberative material, including material developed by a private contractor under a contract with a public agency that are expressions of opinion or are of a speculative nature and are communicated for the purpose of decision-making are considered to be accepted from the disclosure requirements of the Access to Public Records Act. And our, my presumption was that that's exactly what that is. She has come up with some proposed language that she has piecemeal delivered to the subcommittee and they're tinkering with and revising with the goal of ultimately coming up with a complete ordinance that will be presented for the public input, for the entire commission's input for discussion. But like I say, I'll look into that further.
I thought somewhere else it says only, like, it's attorney-client privilege if it's something provided by a contractor. They, they, you know, that, I totally agree that if she's working on it at home and she's writing it, she's changing it, I have no right to see every draft that she's making. But I think, but I, that's how I understood it, that once you have a report from her, it's public. Well, I saw she'd read it. I mean, she, she can't just show little bits of it and then keep the reporting. Well.
Well, it's not a report. It's a draft. It's not a report. It's a draft. It's a working document.
Yeah, but it was provided at a public meeting.
Actually, I disagree. I mean, I think a portion that's being discussed, that they're deliberating, was presented to the full Plan Commission. But the full Plan Commission wasn't presented with the text of the full document. Carrie has worked up an outline again of a, of, you know, what all's gonna be included.
You're gonna just have to agree to disagree. Because otherwise, then you just start getting all your reports by a projector and just showing the bits you wanna talk about.
Are you suggesting?
And hide the rest of it.
Every time. So things that aren't even gonna be considered by the Plan Commission should be made public record?
It was considered. I was here. I saw it.
Now, what was considered was whether or not reciprocal, I mean, there was a very limited portion. I'm talking about, there are things that she has, you know, projected in the future of, from what I understand, of proposed language on, on issues that haven't even been addressed yet.
Yes.
That haven't, haven't even been discussed yet by the Plan Commission, but as the paid consultant, those are her deliberative opinions, work product, ideas that aren't public record.
Well, since she comes here and presents them at a public meeting.
But she hasn't, has she?
I saw it on the projector.
You saw the entire ordinance on?
No, it's a proposition that if I don't, if you don't present an entire document, therefore, it's not a public record.
If it's a doc, if it's a public rec, if it is a document, the.
When you're drawn to the station that I don't think the, the station is between a hard copy and electronic version. When you're drawing a distinction that I don't think that the, the statements between a hard copy and an electronic version.
We're not, we're not saying that because it's electronic.
Yeah, I'm not saying that.
Wouldn't make any difference if it was just one page out of a 11 page document.
So if it had been hard copy and she'd only talked about the first page, then you would only have to share the first page.
If in fact it is a paid, if it falls under these facts where it is by a private consultant, it's her work product, it's not been presented entirety and in its entirety and considered in its entirety by a public agency, then yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Even if she presented part of it in a public meeting.
The part that was, the part that was considered by the public agency, I would tend to agree is, you know, it, well, it's, it's already been discussed in public, so yeah, that should be.
So you wouldn't have to share the whole document?
No, because the, the public body hasn't even seen or discussed or heard of the whole document. So until they have, the law says that her, her documents are her documents. Any consult, any paid consultant is not a public agency and their records and documents are not subject to the Access to Public Records Act. To the extent though that she starts bringing those into a public meeting, the fact that she talked about a particular section of language of a proposed document does not make any of her other records or any continuation of that record, in my opinion, a document, because nothing has changed. The fact is still, those are not public records of a public body. She is not a public agency.
And really, the, like in the case of, we, the, the last public meeting, we were talking about reciprocal setbacks. I'm not sure you would even want to reproduce the text of the draft because it doesn't capture what the discussion was.
But the minutes, I mean.
The minutes should be published more about the discussion, but a, a copy of the draft would just confuse the public.
Because it's not been adopted as a record yet, but that's the issue that I'm researching, that is the issue I'm going to look into.
We disagree about that. You know, you have the rest of your meeting to take care of yourself.
Well, there's not much.
Going back, how did we want to go about as far as the participants and attendees, as far as all these subcommittees? I mean, I still think the subcommittees have a very, a very viable use for this planning commission. I hate to see us disregard that and go back to the deal with all the business right here. You know, the planning commission running through every detail of the draft and that. I still think that there's merit for subcommittee and subcommittee work, don't you think? So in consideration on that, how does the planning commission want to go ahead as far as doing this, as far as putting the, who will be participating in that and how these, if there's minutes, if there's memorandum, how do we want to handle it?
It depends on, well, I don't know.
Well, for one, if we're going to have a subcommittee, I want it to be known there will not be any court.
Well, it's, it's a non-meeting. It, it doesn't fall under the definition of meeting on the open door law. According to a publication by the Indiana Office of Public Access Counselor, where a subcommittee like this is appointed by the non-governing authority of the public agency. As, you know, Carrie Keller Steele, that first, her second visit she made, talked about wanting to, to form this subcommittee. She appoints a committee and then it reports back to us, that is not, that is, that is not a meeting. That is not a public, a governing body of a public agency under, under the, the examples provided by the Office of the Indiana, Indiana Office of Public Access Counselor.
Right, we have to.
So it's a non-meeting of, it's, it's not a governmental body, it's not open to the open door law, so it's not, it's not even a meeting of the open door law, and notices are required, regents aren't required, minutes aren't required. But when they come up with something that is to be discussed, that's the point at which we'll have public meetings and the entire commission, the planning commission will be brought in and they'll, you'll all get a chance to disagree with, make comments on, add to any proposal that they have by way of draft, as will the public.
Okay, let me give you an example. We talked about the water resources, you know, as far as putting a subcommittee to look at the, the land use around the public water. And we made suggestions that we work with City of Salem because they were the, well, in this county, would be the sponsoring group as far as those water resources. So as a point of view, I mean, we're working with the City of Salem, trying to get them to put some people on board and that we're trying to get this patient from the planning commission to have representation. So do we as this governing body pick this or do we let the City of Salem have liberty to make their own appointment?
I guess it depends on who the governing body is on the issue. The example given by the Office of Public Access Counselor was one of the schools setting, they said, if a superintendent appoints a subcommittee of teachers to come up to the curriculum committee to make recommendations to the school board about proposed changes in the curriculum, that is not a governing body of a public agency. It's not subject to the open door law or the Access to Public Records Act, at least at the subcommittee level, because the superintendent was the appointing authority rather than the governing body. And as, as the example goes on to say, however, if the school board had appointed this group of teachers to come up with, to make a recommendation back to them, the school board is the governing body of the public agency, therefore that would be a public, that would be subject to the open door law. So it depends on who the, I mean, as far as your water example, it kind of went over my head as far as, I guess, what the purpose is and who the governing body is.
All right, let me give, for hypothetical reasons, with what you've given me, would it be better that as, as the planning commission president, whoever's in this particular spot, he could appoint that even though it be outside board or outside, you know, as far as.
Okay, that's what. Resolution.
All right. So the resolution, because I'm going to do this in proper way, you know, so we don't have to deal with these issues, you know, while trying to do work. So I'm just trying to do this proper way, because I still think that the subdivision, water resources, land use, 911, you know, we've already discussed the one with rules and procedures, you know. How do you form that subcommittee? Who sets that rule of points?
I mean, okay, it depends on a couple of different things, I think. Bush law, if whatever the, the planning commission is trying to do, like for example, if we were to do something with the subdivision and wanted to hire a consultant to help us with it, if a consultant formed the subcommittee, that's not a governing body.
All right.
Now, if we form a subcommittee by resolution, that's a governing body.
Okay, to report back.
To report back, right. If we do it, we are a governing body and it specifically says in, well, we got a copy of it.
Well, for taxpayer's purposes, I don't want to hire a consultant.
To do the same, right, right. And there's plenty of things that we can do as a planning commission, but if we do that, then the, the subcommittees are going to be public record.
Right.
And then the, and if, and if they're not, if we hire a consultant and the consultant appoints a subcommittee and the, and the form of the subdivision of the planning commission shows up and we do those, technically they're probably going to be public record also. So those are the two things we've got to make sure we prioritize and protect these.
Well, just like I, you know, since the City of Salem deals with a lot of the water issues in there, you know, just in virtue, I'd like to have the water superintendent, you know, be on that. And then also the legal counsel for Salem, because he deals with, you know, the issues of legalities, you know, on the water resources. And then, then I'd like to have representation from the planning commission, you know, to have part, you know, in, for, you know, he's him, people would have to all pay for the commission.
Well, I guess, I, I guess really the distinction is if, if you're organizing a, a new body with a specific charge to come up with a document or whatever, then you're talking about having meetings. But nothing would prevent you from calling the superintendent and saying, hey, I have a question about this, that or the other, there's an issue that's coming to our commission and I want to ask you a question. That, that doesn't mean there's a meeting or a, or a committee or anything like that, or you can call the, um, City, City of Salem Water Company and talk to him about a question. That, that doesn't mean, if there is a, so I guess we want to come up with the idea, you need to establish, is there a need for an actual committee to come up with something, or do we just want to, from time to time, ask someone for input on a particular issue? Because I think that's a way of.
Yeah, the planning commission, you know, when there is no more new business, you know, we could say, okay, what do we want to work on next? Do we want to work on, you know, water share? And then we can get consultants, water people and city people and then the community. You know, just do this planning. If we form by resolution, a smaller subcommittee to do it, it's still going to be the same amount of labor that we're doing now, which makes the committees the same payments.
Okay.
And a lot of the committee.
My take.
You know, the only, the only reason to do subcommittee, in my opinion, period, is to hire consultants and try and put some of the work out, you know, on a big issue for the planning.
I guess, um, so I think what we need to do is, is make sure we know, we need to deal with Carrie Keller Steele, reschedule the subcommittee meeting to take up management and then make sure, I guess, designate either by agreement or by her designation, you know, who will remain on the committee from the planning commission. So as I recall, there was a lot of names thrown about outside the planning commission.
There was, yeah, there's a lot of names.
They haven't, they haven't been.
They haven't participated.
There were maybe one or two, max, max only consistent.
He's come every time.
But other than that, there's, you know, the idea was to get input from, you know, a lot of different fields of interest, including real estate. I think we had a Realtor on there and so.
All right.
So we, we need to have Carrie designate that or someone to really step down.
Well, I think the order of process would go in there is we'll have Carrie go ahead and designate who's going to be participating in that land use, that committee, these other ones. I mean, basically we've had Jeff Sauter, you know, working as the head of the subdivision. You know, we've already brought that before, it's been passed and passed by officials, you know, so. Was that bad?
No, because what happened was when Rhonda had her public access counselor, um, visit, I asked that question because we just had the rules and procedures subcommittee and she says, no, that really shouldn't. So are rules and procedures really should have been public meetings? When we met from 6:00 to 10:30 PM at my office and talked about things like forum and things that, you know, the rules and procedures document, those should have been public meetings, but my recollection is after that, those, those were discussed in here and then noticed and we put a notice on my door for the subdivision meeting.
Okay.
Well, if we, if, if, like if, if three of us were going to, like water resources, if three of us were going to meet, to discuss it, wouldn't it just be adequate to noted in the minutes? Or is it even necessary? That's the question.
I re-asked that because I was starting to think.
If, if, building on what David said, if we decided that we needed a little bit of additional time on, like water resources, that three of us were going to look into it in more detail, would it be adequate to noted in the minutes, since we're not going to be operating a forum?
No, because, no, because the idea is, yeah, it's not a forum of this body. The question is, is that new body, that subcommittee of three, is that a governing body of a public agency?
Three people are just kind of taken out of yourselves to go get something done, you know? That's totally different. But if we by resolution, these three people are the people, then we've created a new.
And created a new body that would be.
And two out of the three are in one place, then it's me.
Yeah.
I mean, it just gets so bogged down.
I really don't want to bog this thing down. I think that, you know, as we saw, you know, the sensitivity and the details with the issues as far as when it comes with the land use, we already get bogged down with the actual work document. I mean, it, it's enough energy spent as far as going down without trying to bog it down, you know, additionally with other facets to this thing. I, I really think that we lose, lose the purpose of our initiative, our work if we put so many things in there as a hurdle with that. Transparency has been a key issue, you know, here in all governance, you know, in government. Been trying to disclose that in these meetings as much as possible. I don't want to present out a rough document, draft document as a public document that hasn't been reviewed, it has not been reviewed by the planning commission.
And is subject to be changed.
It's very subject to change.
Tremendously.
And I don't want to, I don't want to mishear the public in that, being confused as far as taking a look at it on a flash of that without knowing, you know, with the discussion that's going on. I'm just having a problem with this thing getting bogged down. I want to make it as simplistic as we can. We're still having this culture. That's my sole purpose, that's. How we do that, you know, I thought at one time it was a good idea to have the City of Salem be active, have an active role in this water resource, land use, because they could tell us things that we don't know as a planning commission, that are problem issues with the watershed at Lake Selinda and also with Lake John Temple, without us having to re-study and redo things that they already know. I'm willing to move on with no more subcommittees other than what's already presented with a outside contractor as of right now and abolish all subcommittees. We'll discuss everything here.
I'll make the motion to do that.
Other than the.
Contract with her?
Yeah.
Not with the contractor, but all the rest of it.
How many meetings? We still make, is that one meeting? You want to try to do two meetings?
Who?
The planning commission.
Entire planning. I mean, after several meetings, did one?
You know, I mean, that's what it takes. That means that this planning commission will meet more times to finish this process instead of subcommittee work.
Just want to get a motion here for that.
I know.
But, I mean, that's what we got to. So have you made a motion yet?
I have made a motion.
What was your motion?
My motion is to, you know, not have any subcommittees, not, not any subcommittees by resolution, abolish, maybe most of the committees that are created by resolution, which would be official.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll say.
John Michler's second, it's open for comment.
If you have anything else to say.
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, if we needed a subcommittee, I mean, what's wrong with making it another public meeting?
You can, you can do that.
And I think that's Adam's point, is let's address it on a case-by-case basis if the need arises, you know. Do we need to have a committee, or can someone just do some research and report back?
Yeah, you know, I can say, well, I'll go talk to so-and-so and take care of that. You can say, now, we'll talk to so-and-so and take care of that. He can say the same thing. But if we, by resolution, say, okay, Wayne, Adam, John, take care of this.
We're going to get together and be a committee and...
Then, then we've got to post notice that we can do something. See what I'm saying? It does not limit us in what we can do. Making subcommittees is actually more limited than us just, you know, somebody taking it on themselves to go do the labor, you know, and just bring it back to the tables and do this on the next, you know, day, then to the next regular week.
Motion to close discussion?
I'll make the motion to close.
Second. Second, Adam. The motion that's in before us is to abolish all subcommittees, except for the contractual subcommittee. All in favor, seen it, found us saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion Kerry. Okay. Any other business for us to turn to the public? Planning Commission, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
I brought a map for the general public and the planning commission, some of them already seen it. I tried to identify all the poultry operations in the county. It's kind of fluent, but the best numbers I can come up with are between forty-five and fifty. This year's probably going to be directly here, or, you know, the ones that grew up going in, channels in the area, my home area. So, really interesting thing on that map is, if you compare it to our land use plan, where the carp's areas are identified, they're smack in the middle.
Yep.
That's where the, that's where the growth is. And, you know, that's where the, you know, it'd be, a lot of them need to harvest, which are going to be plus, we were about. But that's, you know, I'm not saying that it's good or bad, that's just the information on the plan, which is what I'm saying. So what we're doing is very important, you know. The issue's not going to go away, so, you know, there's, there are concerns of how, you know, how big we can just get.
Anybody else for the planning commission? Anybody would like to speak? Already exhausted with the issue. Does anybody would like to speak to the planning commission this time?
As in, on what?
Anything.
Anything. Give me a good subject.
Okay. You started on this water situation.
Yes.
Ron Hamilton, forty-eight, forty-five, North Cops, very good.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm in Jefferson Town, sure.
Okay.
Okay. John Hay Lake. This is back in nineteen and odd, sixty-eight, when they built the lake. Okay, he said, I wrote down this name. Okay, they called it Twin Rush Creek Watershed.
Conservancy District.
There you go. Okay, we're paying taxes.
Correct.
On all that. Next thing I know, they turned around and settled the lake for the City of Salem. That kind of ripped me apart right there when you're talking about that.
They did sell it. They, it's an operator...
Okay, how many people in Western County is paying on the Twin Rush Creek per taxes?
They didn't have watershed on it.
Yeah.
It was as a...
Where's the water coming from? And it's supposed to be about a watershed when we signed the contract back. You know, now, where'd you start that up? Yeah, a little bit of a root bar, a little part of it. Because I had to go through this kind of bullshit right here just to get water from John Hay Lake to sample my house, and everybody else is going plum to Pecan, and we didn't have water. So, I mean, that, you know, that's one thing. I hate to get started on this one. But just to make a long story short, yeah, you know, that's one, one source. And then, like I said, with this poultry stuff, and, y'all, putting it right down on the corner past my property, y'all, I then talked to Tommy Alexander, I tried to get him up here. And, you know, as far as, I don't know, free enterprise, I've got nothing against that. Guy's got to make a living. Okay? But whenever it starts to depreciate my property, that's when, that's like Tommy Alexander, he said, yeah, he said, right there it is. He can stand in front of it, it ain't no farther than this door right here to the courthouse steps from a chicken house. He said, okay, my property's not depreciating, there's about twenty-three thousand dollars just because people can see that chicken house right there. So that's just one thing that I've got to say, you guys can take it from there.
So are you for us working the ordinances, trying to work with setbacks and densities?
Well, like I said, you just, you just figure what I just got to keep saying right there.
Okay.
In other words, yeah, right here it is, if it depreciated my property, what would you do? In other words, yeah, if I have to pay for part of me putting something on my property, no, I don't go along with that either. Because here's my boundary line, I'm paying taxes, and I'm paying for it. So in other words, what this guy does across the road, yeah, he can't. But then again, that's a part that, you know, pretty much got a lot of people who've seen that. And, yeah, in other words, if it was on enough property that were, yeah, it was back out here where nobody had to see it, and in other words, yeah, so many hundreds of feet or thousands of feet away, instead of, yeah, I stand in my door and I'm looking down here at chicken shit. I mean, like I said, I've really got nothing against somebody else trying to make a living. I mean, that's what we're all around here for. But it's just one of those things that, yeah, if my property depreciates on account of this, and, yeah, I'm against that in a heartbeat.
That's, that's why we think there are appropriate places to put chicken houses.
There you go. That's the only thing, yeah.
Going back to, you know, the, you know, Twin Rush, that's been discussed, you know, as far as water, the extension of the dam and stuff like that on John Hay and stuff. When that was originally set up as Conservancy District, you as taxpayers and that watershed paid for that maintenance and upkeep of that, the part of that, the part of that lake, you know, Twin Rush has been much money as far as maintenance on that lake.
Is it?
Because the operating agreement is the Salem has to keep the maintenance up on the lake, and for keeping the maintenance up on the lake, then they can sell water on the lake. So that's how that come about, and then, it's an interlocutor agreement, or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, still, you know, I mean, that's something that's been turning around, and, yeah, I've had a few big properties out there, yeah, still things happen along with it, which I think are going to drop at a certain point in time. In other words, no, I'm buying water out of it, and I've been paying for that since nineteen sixty-eight. So in other words, yeah. I mean, that's just one thing, and then you brought that up, yeah, it kind of stuck in my craw.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else would like to talk?
I would.
Yes.
Appreciate your name.
Don Rogers, Salem, out there in Lockiron Lake. I want to commend John Mishler for making this map, so we can kind of visualize what's going on in our county. I had the opportunity back in the nineties to get involved with public and learn about what their concerns are with the Reform Party, with the vibrant political party back in nineteen ninety-two and ninety-six, where I served as chairman for the Indiana State Reform Party. And what I learned there is, there's a lot about public concern for the state. I learned even more by getting involved off and on with just a, making a showing once in a while with the county concerns. But I guess it all starts off with, with how are you? How are you doing? It's a very important question, because you always want to hear back the answer, well, I'm doing fine, I'm doing okay. And I guess that's why we form a committee at the county level, at the state level, and at the national level, to ensure that everybody is okay. You know, it's very important. We get to learn a lot about our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, and our Declaration of Independence.
Can we keep this too specific as far as, you know, with the planning commission?
Well, yes, it's very important, that all men are created equal, as in doubt to their creator. That means whatever rights is granted, whatever they're voted on, no one should be subjected to somebody else's rights, because everybody should have a fair share, a fair level of Because everybody is created equal according to their, according to their creator, you know, says so in the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence. So, when we, when we go up and make our resolutions, and I think you mentioned subcommittees before, the planning commission has a great responsibility to answer to their, to their citizens that live here in this county, and they need to be able to please every single one. You know, one, one person's rights can't usurp another person's rights, nor that they can usurp another person's rights, and so on, and so on. Because everybody's important. It doesn't matter if somebody is building a chicken house, and there's health concerns for the neighbors, and even for the worker, and even for the food they're eating. I think money is overshadowed. It overshadows our decisions quite often rather than the livelihood of every single one, or God-given rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit for happiness. Because if we don't have the liberty to live our life according to the way we want, within reason of law, and with someone that may come over and say, hey, I'm going to build this, I need the money, disregarding how it's going to affect their neighbor, then that's really against our constitutional rights. And it really needs to be looked at as, how can we help every single one of us? Because we all sit at the same level. If we're an Einstein or a Peewee Herman, we both have, we all have a purpose in life, whether it's comedy or science. And I really want, really would like the planning committee to rethink about the subcommittee, maybe call it a, a research committee or exploratory committee, or something that is self-volunteered, because the most truest answers, the most accurate answers you can find from anyone is out in the public eye, the people who are out there living around your county. Hear it word from word for them. I mean, they're the ones that pay the taxes, they're the ones that say, hey, I love it here, and they're the ones that are going to increase the prestige of this, of this community. That's really all I have to say for now.
Okay, appreciate that. I just would like to urge as much as you can to refer your statements, you know, as far as issues that we can deal with, land use, you know, that we have control of them, you know, as far as placement, you know, and land use and those type of things. I appreciate the comments, you know, as far as liberties and all like that, and believe me, the planning commission take those to heart and stuff. I would like to address as far as, for the planning commission, as much as for direction on the physical aspects of the process, as much as you can, to give us direction. You know, I appreciate the, I don't want this to be a political format area for those comments to be addressed with that, because there's a lot of political comments. As far as the planning commission, our work is to deal with the physical aspects, as drafting ordinances, and the working with the physical aspects of the county and stuff, as much as possible. So, if you could, I'd appreciate that. So, anybody else would like to address? Yes?
I'll limit myself to zoning and planning. And, may you put me on the clock, so don't go over three minutes, I already used plenty of time. Put me on the clock, and I'll ramble on, but, you know, I understand, everybody has good intentions. I'm familiar with John Mishler, when he was running from the beginning, he had honest concerns, just like every citizen has their own concerns, and he ran straightforward campaigning, and campaigning on zoning openly, and I appreciate anybody that runs on the issues that they're going to do, and he stuck with that, that is, you know, I, I think that's great. And if, you know, I lose at the ballot box, I lose at the ballot box. I get to have my three minutes, and then I'll have to be happy with that till the next meeting, but... So, to stick, you know, the first time I ever came across zoning, I was going to UK, I was living in Lexington, Kentucky. There were some Jews wanted to build a synagogue in a, in their neighborhood, their neighborhood. I don't know who actually lived there. And this had to go before the zoning vote. Well, most of the people were not Jews, they were Christians. It was like, what does this do for me? They weren't going to go to it. Far as they knew, it would just be some more cars on one day of the week, it might be more trouble. It was no use to them, and it might possibly be a problem one day a week or so. So as far as they were concerned, it was, you know, it's a narrative to oppose it. It don't do me no good, it only, it might hurt me. So they opposed it, and they stopped the synagogue from being built. I thought this was, you know, you know, you said not to, but zoning affects things, and it did right there. Their freedom of religion was made null and void by the zoning ordinance. And it, they didn't win, they lost. They absolutely lost. They can buy a piece of property and say, we want to build a synagogue there, and people say, we're not Jews, why do we want a synagogue? Their use that they wanted for their property was subject to the will of the majority, the mob group. What the mob wants, group, and they were the minority, and they got trampled on. Then I've seen them other places, and later on, that was in the eighties, in the nineties in Colorado Springs, somebody had a home Bible study. They said, that's contrary to the zoning. You're having church in your house. And then, you know, so they banned that. Then in San Diego, later on, so there've been three, four, at least four incidents that I can remember in places where, and one that was like in my neighborhood in Lexington, where people stopped a house of worship or a home Bible study, and I've had home Bible studies. I've had home Bible studies. If there's no zoning, my home Bible study would be in a danger. But if there is zoning at some point in the future, it might be a problem. And then I remember the mosque, you know, the mosque at Ground Zero, or, you know, some people said, it's not a mosque, it's whatever it was, but they were going to buy some property and build something there. And I thought it was, I thought everybody that argued... And I thought it was, I thought everybody that argued against that mosque, it's a free country if you think, and I thought it's kind of, I don't know if it's in good taste to build a mosque right next to Ground Zero. I, I thought the people that criticized that had a right to criticize. But then some people said, "The zoning board should not allow it." Because a lot of people don't want it, the zoning board should stop it. So, I mean, you know, I'm coming at this from my angle, which is that people should be allowed to do with their own property as they see fit unless they harm somebody else. And that's the common law. You know, if you go to court, the court says, "If you can't show that you've been harmed, you don't, you know, you can't bring a case, you don't have a tort." I think that's how you go. And if you have been harmed, you can be compensated for as much as you've been harmed. And if you go away from that, then there's only two ways it can go. Either somebody can get a permission to harm people from the government, or people that are harmed can be denied their redress. So the court, now, who wants to go to court? But then the court, you know, they have a fair, because they have a lot of training in finding out about harm and adjudicating the harm, whereas county boards are more subject to political pressures. So I would, I prefer, I know there's a lit, what I would prefer is if, there needs to be something done about turkey houses, then the commissioners should pass an ordinance that applies to turkey houses. Now, I looked at the Indiana Code about zoning, and once you have a zoning ordinance, you open up, you go in there reading the Indiana Code, what, that they have the power to regulate it, your zoning boards and planning commissions, it's, it is very, very, very extensive. They can, you know, so a lot of things that would never be done, I tell you what kind of grain crops that you could farm, but it's in there. They can say, you can raise hay, you can't plant corn. You opened the whole can of worms, I'm sure I've used my three minutes, and so.
Thank you, David. Anybody else? Dave?
I'd like to, but I don't think our attorney, I think I'm supposed to be here to collect information.
I would like to see.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, public security.
Well, we got another commissioner here, so I didn't know. I didn't want to tread on ground where I was.
I don't either. Blank out.
Dave Brown, Commissioner for the third district. Uh, my district is one of those districts where we happen to have a considerable number of turkey houses and chicken houses, plus a new hatchery, uh, system being built right now. There's a lot of, a lot of area going over there. One thing I'll say to the, the Planning Commission, anything you decide, I know ultimately going to come to us. And we're going to, we're going to either support it or we're going to go against it, one or the other. One thing I, I really feel disappointed in is that you abolished the subcommittees tonight. I think the cause of a Planning Commission board, the size it is, I think it's very, very important, by just looking at that map up there, that we get things rolling fast. And I think anytime you get rid of your subcommittees, you're going to slow down. And I think you're going to wind up with a lot of discussion and not much accomplished. I, I believe in the setback system. I do not believe in the reciprocal setback system. But I believe in the setback system because like the gentleman said earlier, you know, it's his problem. He should be able to build where he wants to build without setback. I agree with that totally. But we do know that, that the confined feeding operations do have effect on our neighbors. So they need to be restricted to certain areas. That needs to be, that, that should happen. I think abolishing subcommittees, you can't get it done fast enough. I mean, I understand, uh, I understand what you're saying, well, I'll run down and check on it. Sometimes that works, sometimes it don't. A subcommittee, you, you've got to get a committed subcommittee and attack the situation. Keyword being committed. You can't have subcommittee people that's not going to show up. You're going to have to have people that's going to show up and be committed to that to get it back to the Planning Commission, get it opened up to the public, get it discussed, and get it passed. You know, I'm looking forward to seeing some of this come, but I really feel by abolishing the subcommittees, I won't see it for a while. Since I'm running for reelection, I may never see it, I don't know.
You do understand we didn't abolish that subcommittee?
Uh, you just, the motion was you're going to abolish all subcommittees.
Except for the contract, contract. There's more on land use as a contract.
There is a land use contract?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't do anything to that subcommittee.
My emphasis then is we need to get things done fast. Every week, I, almost every single week, I get a letter that people have applied to build chicken houses somewhere. John, you get the same letters. But they come in the mail to us, which we turn over to, at the commissioner meetings, you know. I don't know why we still get them, because we got a planning commission, but we still get them.
We have to get them by law, no, they have to.
Yeah, and we still get them. So things are happening fast out there. There's a lot of chicken houses built, being built right now. So we need to start taking action and get the ball rolling, okay? I support what you're doing. This is only the second meeting I've been to because really, by law, I didn't even know if I could or not. Uh, but I'm, I'm really interested in this setback, and I want to gather all the information I can, so thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I'll just make a comment. I actually am a bit confronted because I am a confined feeding operator, but I think there is proper placement of confined feeding operations, and I am partly for that. In fact, that's the reason that I am on this Plant Commission to work with proper site placement. I've had concerns about even in, not just my species of industry, but the confined feeding operations and some of the placement that those operations were put in. And the thing is, is that they could, you know, and I'm, I've always commended back to, I've heard this thing about common sense, you know, that common sense, you wouldn't do certain things, but if you're allowed to do certain things, then sometimes common sense goes away. And I'm adamant that there is a way to have proper site placement of confined feeding operations. And that is what we're trying to work on, but it is a very cumbersome, tiresome, and boring type of process as far as to get. I would hate to work on this land use and deal with CAFOs and CFOs in this type of arena than a subcommittee. Because there's been a lot of things that have bounced off the board that have never surfaced as far as even being written on any document, but there's a lot of ideas that's been bounced around. And I think that if you do that, you're going to squelch the amount of discussion, the open discussion to, to address those ideas to get a proper ordinance out.
I didn't hear that part, Dave, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that part.
Well, that's, that's my editorial, so.
Is the Planning Committee, it hadn't been abolished, right?
The one on the land use dealing with, that's God, Carrie Keller steals at Marvell Road.
She's contracted.
Yeah, she's contracted, that's still a.
Is that a closed committee? Is that a closed?
It's a non-meeting.
It's a non-meeting, yeah. Okay, so you can't discuss anything with them? Right. I mean, if you could volunteer to be on it. Okay. Uh, with a little time I have.
Worst thing about it, see, that's what we get into. We go from attendance to three to seven. There was ten that was, uh, actually established, and we go from three to seven.
Yeah, I mean, I got some very good information, some supportive information that maybe they can use.
If you want supportive information in a written form, we'll take it into consideration. We took, uh, we took the public comments out here at this last meeting into consideration at the last meeting.
Come right here, you know, reflect your ideas. Now, I got a mom with cancer, I usually can't, you know, I try to make it.
I appreciate that. You know, uh, each one of us up here are volunteers for this, and this has been kind of a lengthy process, and we wish we had been further along than what we are, but we have hurdles that we have to move across. Anything else for discussion from the audience? Appreciate your attendance. It's getting late in the hour, but I like to entertain the motion to the gentleman if there's no other defense. I don't want to squelch anybody's thing.
You all make a quick decision.
Motion, Jim Day, do you have a second?
I'll sit.
All in favor, seeing it by my saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We can stay here and shut the door.